Let's go ahead and call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, May 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be from Pastor Craig Runsey from the Redemption River Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pastor, you want to come on up to the mic?
Yeah.
And then turn the microphone on. Right here, this little button right here. Yep, you're there.
Pull it up or down. It's up and down. No.
Nope.
Go that direction.
It's on, but it's not working.
There you go.
Oh, I see the light.
You got it.
Nope. Get to talk loud, Craig.
All right. Lord, we just come to you this evening and we thank you. Father, be in the midst of this room. Your Spirit just be felt and for this community, just bless it, Lord, the plans and things that are being done. We glorify you with the agenda tonight to just be focused on and the right pieces come together in only way that you can. Lord, bless every person in this room and the things that they do. Father, we praise you, we thank you, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer. Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Massingham.
Here.
Councilman Depew.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson.
Here.
Mayor Cornman.
Here.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item, on the printed agenda, or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Item six are citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven are consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that we all received in our packet all of the items listed below in the agenda. So with that being said, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight are workshop items for discussion. The City Council will consider a resolution in support of a certificate of need for the construction of an 85-bed skilled nursing facility inside the city limits of the City of Papa Bluff. City Manager Robert Nodelle to present.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the upcoming July 14th, 2025, meeting of the Missouri Health Facilities Review Committee in Jefferson City, that committee will consider a certificate of need application for a brand-new, state-of-the-art, 85-bed skilled nursing facility to be located at 2670 Shelby Road in Papa Bluff. This would be an over $9 million investment in our community, creating 40 construction jobs and 70 permanent healthcare jobs. The facility would be owned by Paradigm Senior Management, operating as Black River Skilled Nursing LLC. Paradigm is based in Dexter. It has a similar facility under construction in Sykeston and presently operates facilities in Gideon, Birchtree, Bernie, Dexter, and Bloomfield. This company has a reputation for operating clean and well-run centers, and its facility would have a significant Alzheimer's dementia care component and would meet current unmet demand here locally. Letters of support for this project have already been submitted by Senator Bean, Representative Billington, Mayor Cornman, the Butler County Commission, officials from Papa Bluff Regional Medical Center, Steve Halter of the Papa Bluff Chamber of Commerce, and many others. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Sounds like a great project for Papa Bluff. There's no question else, make a motion to move it to the voting session tonight.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Ms. Stacy Sharot, campaign manager for the Show Me Smoke Free Initiative, will appear before the City Council and present information to raise awareness about the importance of a healthier, smoke-free environment. Ms. Sharot.
Hello. Thank you.
See if it, push that button, see if it works maybe.
So, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it. I am Stacy Sharot. Holly Scott from Missouri. Yeah, Holly Scott is a member of the, there we go, Next to Rise Program, and she's going to tell you about the Show Me Smoke Free Campaign. That's an initiative funded by the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. So I will just let her get started. Hello. Hello, Papa Bluff City Council.
Speak up a little bit. There you go.
Thank you so much for taking your time out to our campaign and Next to Rise Program. I am excited to be here today. First, I would like to go over outline of our presentation. First, I will tell you about the Next to Rise Program and the Show Me Smoke Free Campaign. Then I'll show you the Show Me Smoke Free Opinion Survey, and I'll share some information about how comprehension, smoke-free air protections can make the people of Missouri healthier. And finally, I'll tell you how you could take action to protect the health of your custodians. Here's a little bit about the Next to Rise. My name is Holly Scott, and I am a member of Next to Rise Program. Next to Rise is a youth engagement program funded by Missouri Department of Health Senior Our mission is to promote a healthy Missouri free of harmful effects of tobacco addiction. Currently, we are looking to reduce the negative health impacts of secondhand smoke and vapor through the campaign called Show Me Smoke Free. This is important to me because secondhand smoke causes a lot of negative health issues. This campaign doesn't tell people that they are, that they can't smoke. We just want people who do smoke or vape to do it in a way that doesn't harm others. We believe in protecting local control. Parents, teachers, doctors, and local elected officials have come together to decide what's best for their kids. Some of the bills that were filled by state lawmakers this year would allow stores to sell tobacco near schools, stop local city councils from restricting the sale of marketing of flavored tobacco products, and roll back minimum age laws. We believe that local health departments have the best ability to enforce the laws since they are communities where they, retailers are located. But whether you agree with certain local law or not, you should be still on the side of local control. The mission of Show Me Smoke Free is to work with decision-makers and community members to find ways to limit exposure to secondhand smoke and vapor in Missouri. We accomplish these things by short-term and long-term goals. In short-term, our aim is to raise awareness about this. We need for the need of comprehensive smoke-free protections to protect workers, families across Missouri. In the long-term, our goal is the statewide policy that ensures all workplaces and public places 100% and smoke vape-free. We've broken our short- and long-term goals down even further into three campaigns objectives. First is to educate, train, and mobilize individuals around the need to improve Missouri's smoke-free protections. The second is to develop a campaign partnership with organizations to strengthen the last campaign's support. Lastly, we meet with the key decision-makers like you and provide opportunities to craft smoke-free policies that protect the health of more Missourians along the way, or collect various measures or programs that helps track their success. The one key measure in our program is to Show Me Smoke Free Opinion Survey, which I'll talk about next. Like I mentioned, our opinion survey helps us measure our process, progress, by collecting data about how people feel about secondhand smoke and see, and vapor, and see what kind of smoke-free protections Missourians would like to see. To help this process, we would like to ask you to take a few minutes and take the survey Here's how you take the survey. On your phone, you can open your camera and scan the QR code or how to take the survey page. You can open up the browser and go to tinyurl.com/showmesmokefreesurvey. The last question asks for a five-digit Next to Rise ID. Just enter the number 11111, and the survey takes about four minutes to complete. We'll greatly appreciate your honest feedback. Thank you so much for taking the survey. Now let's divide into a bit more detail about why comprehensive smoke-free air protections would be good for Missouri. Even though Missouri does have a smoke-free air law, the current law leaves millions of Missourians exposed to secondhand smoke. Studies show that exposure to secondhand smoke increases your risk by 20 to 30%, and the secondhand smoke kills 1,200 Missourians every year. The fact that seven out of 10 Missourians still lack legal protection from secondhand smoke at work leaves them at risk for serious negative health impacts. Papa Bluff currently has no existing citywide policy that covers all indoor public spaces and workspaces, like restaurant, bars, workplaces, or businesses throughout the city. The current state law still allows smoking in many workplaces and public places, like bars, small restaurants, bowling alleys, pool halls, and indoor arenas. And vaping isn't mentioned in the law at all. So when it comes to updating our policies, we believe that e-cigarettes and vapes should be included. All workplaces should be included, and now all public places should be included, even outdoor spaces like parks and playgrounds. With comprehension, smoke-free protections like these, we would like to get, we would like to get to enjoy multiple benefits, including improvement in community health, like smoke-free policies and no negative impact on businesses. We can actually save businesses money on things like insurance, cleaning costs, additional comprehension, smoke-free policies, and permit you from starting to smoke and vape in the first place. It helps protect the next generation of Missourians from a lifetime of nicotine addiction and It's also important to mention that comprehension, smoke-free protections are not anti-smokers. Many lawmakers don't want to be seen as the bad guy, and by taking away people's right to smoke, but these policies are not about taking away anyone's right to smoke. These are simply ensuring that people who do smoke or vape do it in a way that don't harm others. That brings us to our final step, how to take action. If you would like to show your support in the campaign, I want to invite you to fill out an official campaign support card with your signature and quote about why you support comprehension, smoke-free protections. Once you've filled out the card, we may recognize your support by sharing news on the media outlets and your own social media. Once you've filled out a support card, you can also make your own social media post about the need to comprehend smoke-free protections, and don't forget to tag us. If you're interested in taking action, let us know how you would like to get involved by going to tinyurl.com/showmesmokefreetakeaction, or use the QR code to take action today page of your turnout. Thank you for your time today. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for presenting that to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
You did a great job.
Thank you both of you.
I appreciate it.
Do you guys want a card?
Yes, please.
Please.
Thank you so much for coming.
Just basically, just what are you asking us to do?
We're just trying to raise awareness about it right now for the first step.
Thank you.
And then we are trying to, there's a lot negative public things going on because of the smoke, secondhand smoke. I'm not saying don't smoke, or anything, or anything, but we love to keep retaining that supportive card, and I, I really like it.
Sure.
Thank you. We love that.
Ms. Scott.
Yeah.
I would like to say, you know, when I was in high school, addressing the City Council would take a lot of courage.
Absolutely.
And really appreciate you for doing that, and I know that's not an easy thing to do. And as a former Director of the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, I'm glad to see this program is alive here in our community, and so we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I'm going to be a sophomore this year.
A sophomore? Wow.
That's really brave.
Yeah, you did not seem nervous at all.
I know. She did really good.
It's great.
If she wants to like it, I'm like, okay. You can follow us on Instagram or...
I, uh, I don't support anti-smoking.
Oh, okay. Here we go. Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Item C, the City Council will consider a change order, number one, to the Missouri Department of Transportation Project, TAP-5100-113, the Vine Street Rehabilitation. Manager Robert Nodelle to present.
Yes, this change order will extend the contract time for the Vine Street Rehab Project. If you've been in that area, you will notice that the sidewalks and the curb work is done, and the light poles have been installed on one side of the street. The shipment for the other, light poles on the other side were three feet shorter than the rest, and so replacements had to be ordered. There's a six-week lead time on those poles, making this change order necessary. There is no additional cost to the city, but to continue this grant program, this project, we need to approve the change order. Happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion, move it to the voting session to be held June the 2nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine are action-required items, AA Bill Number 8632. The City Council will take action on ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement for city-owned property located at 113 Relief Street.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8632.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri to execute a lease agreement pertaining to flood buyout properties owned by the City of Papa Bluff and located at 113 Relief Street.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Papa Bluff to execute a lease agreement pertaining to flood buyout properties owned by the City of Papa Bluff and located at 113 Relief Street.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8632.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman Depew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill Number 8632 has been adopted. BB, Bill Number 8633, the City Council will take action on ordinance approving a conditional use permit to install a new, from the factory manufactured home at 2335 South 11th Street.
Make a motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Daniel L. Griffin to install a new, from the factory manufactured home at 2335 South 11th Street in Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8633.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Daniel L. Griffin to install a new, from the factory manufactured home at 2335 South 11th Street in Papa Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
A manufactured home is such a broad statement. You know, it could mean a trailer, it could mean a modular, you know, a several things. Plus...
He's got something for us, the gentleman.
Would you like to come up?
I'm Daniel Griffin. I knew Boyer said something last time questioning it, and I brought a thing from the modular place that we were looking at.
Start down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And then the other thing would be that I've already had other inquiries of people wanting to move modular homes in, and then again, it's sort of after our efforts to people out of certain places and with lack of the mobile home court on 11th Street, you know, now, by the party that's shipped, it's to allow them to replace anything they want, basically.
Well, they would have to come before planning and zoning or the council to be able to do that. These are currently considered on a case-by-case basis. I have had some discussion with the council about possibly revisiting that ordinance in the future. However, at this time, this is the only one that's up for consideration.
The mobile home court on 11th Street? Are you talking about the one in 300 block?
Yes.
Okay. Those, that used to be, they rented spots. They didn't all, the owners of the land didn't own all of those trailers. I don't know now. Okay.
This, uh, this type of item that we've considered this in the past, and it's worked out quite well. We've done that on the east side, I think on two places on the east side, and we haven't had any of them, and it's been 20 years since. So I'm in support of it.
And just to clarify, this will be built on a foundation?
Yes.
Yep.
It'll be concrete around or underpinned? Yeah. Yeah, but what's underneath going to be?
I don't know.
Like a block? Like a student home?
Tony and the other guy that's not here this time, they said they were going to get all the paperwork for me.
Okay.
You know, so I'm trying to stay with you.
Sure. Exactly. Right.
Like I said, I thought that would help out because I knew there was questions. All right?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we're going to skip a roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman Depew?
No.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have five yes votes. It passes.
Bill Number 8633 has been adopted. CC, Bill Number 8634, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the disposal of antiquated records from the Finance Department and Human Resources.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8634?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records by the Papa Bluff Departments of Finance and Human Resources.
Motion for second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records by the City of Papa Bluff Departments of Finance and Human Resources.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8634?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman Depew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill Number 8634 has been adopted. DD, Resolution Number 2056, the City Council will take action on a resolution calling for a public hearing relative to the annexation of property located at 4101 Highway 67 North and owned by MBM Lodging LLC, doing business as Motel 6.
Motion for reading of Resolution 2056?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
A resolution with respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area to the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 4101 North US Highway 67 in Butler County and owned by the MBM Lodging LLC, doing business as Motel 6.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes, sir. Just a second, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. Come on up if you've got a question.
State your name and address.
State your name and your address for the record, please.
Your what?
Your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name's Bill Crawford, 2609 Highway T, Papa Bluff. I'm one of the property owners out there, and I just have a few questions. We, I'd like to know who requested this annexation. We received a letter that said that Motel 6 requested it. I think you all heard that the Highway Department requested it. We can't find out who actually requested this. Also, was told that only one property owner objected to it. That's definitely not true. Every property owner out there objects to it, every single one. If they want to annex a frontage road, why don't they do the one across the highway? Because that's where the Highway Department's at already, which makes no sense. Has the city considered what the cost will be to maintain that for the fire protection, you know, the police protection? Repaving the road, when that truck center goes in out there, it's going to destroy that road. It's going to be constant maintenance on it, all the mowing, all the utilities, everything. I don't think the city has considered all that. Plus, we feel like that we've been misled on this thing, and every property owner, we've talked to every one of them, and every one of them is against it. We feel that it will devalue our properties. We're definitely against it, and we've heard that it's a cut-and-dried deal. I'm not calling any names, but even, even one of the council members, I talked to them, and they thought it was the Highway Department that requested it, not the city. But I have a letter from you all, or the planning and zoning or whatever, that Motel 6 requested it. And I don't think that anybody's considered what it's going to cost for the protection, everything for one motel, you know, and it's nothing but a drug haven. I mean, the law is there constantly. You know, it's, the county, I'm sure, would love to, for the city to take it over, but it's going, it's going to cost the city a lot of money. I think in the long term, you'd be better off to buy the hotel and move it in town than what it's going to cost in the long run. I just, and also, I would like an answer on who done this, and I would also like to get it in writing if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Nodelle. Do you have a?
Yeah, appreciate that, and yes, this annexation was requested by the operators of Motel 6. We're happy to, we're happy to provide you a copy of that petition that we received.
Okay, then why were we told later that it was the Highway Department that requested it? Why was the council told that?
That may be conflated with the voluntary annexation of the modot right-of-way between, between the property and existing city limits. They did voluntarily petition for the annexation of the modot right-of-way as part of that project, but they did not, the Highway Department of the state did not request us to annex the Motel 6 property, just to clarify.
Why were we misled?
I would be curious who had told you that.
I can produce all that, but...
Pardon?
I said I'll be able to produce all that.
Okay. Yeah, please reach out and do so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Crawford, Bill, we will, we are trying to move this to a public hearing, as I told you earlier, and you will be invited back. You're welcome to come back and speak again at that hearing.
Yeah, you'll have another opportunity to come back in.
Now, will our attorneys be able to be at that hearing?
Anybody.
It's open to the public.
Yeah. It's open, yeah.
It's open. Anyone can come. Anyone can come.
Okay. All right. Okay.
All right, thank you. We have a first and second on that resolution. That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And a motion to adopt. We're ready for a roll call.
Okay, let's go into the roll call.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Resolution Number twenty-five-six has been adopted. E E, Resolution twenty-five-seven, the city council will take action on a resolution in support of a certificate of need for their construction of an eighty-five-bed skilled nursing facility inside the city limits of the city of Popper Bluff.
Motion for reading of Resolution twenty-five-seven?
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, in support of the Certificate of Need Application sixty-two oh-five N S, to construct a new eighty-five-bed skilled nursing facility within the city limits of Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phillips.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Resolution Number twenty-five-seven has been adopted. Item ten, or city manager's report. Manager Nodelle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very short report tonight. Just for awareness, tomorrow, a number of us will attend the regional Missouri Municipal League meeting in Sykeson, and we look forward to the opportunity to visit with some of our colleagues in other communities across the region. Certainly, we would add that our thoughts and prayers go out to the folks in St. Louis, Missouri, as well as Scott County and other areas of the state that were impacted by tornadoes over the weekend. We certainly understand what they're dealing with and certainly are thinking and praying for them. Speaking of severe weather, we do have potential for some strong storms moving through here tonight between 10:00 p.m. and midnight, so we would encourage people to be weather-aware. It's a fact that eighty percent of all fatalities in a tornado occur in the nighttime hours. And so making sure that you're close to your phone or, you know, can hear alerts on those situations is very, very important. But that's it for the report this evening.
I do want to add that I've had a lot of people reach out to me in favor of how well the pickup of everything and the cleanup and volunteers and then the C T E that came and did all the final pickup, and what a great job everybody's done.
Well, that's, that's definitely good to hear, and I will add in that regard that the street department had announced recently that this Friday would be the last day for pickup vegetative debris in the city if property owners need help getting that debris off of their curb. And, you know, after that date, that will be responsibility of the individuals. We've released a contractor, and our, our street department is, hopefully, with upcoming or potential storms in the future notwithstanding, we're hoping to move on to some other summer projects that we have planned.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.